Welcome to the county commission meeting for October 31st, 2019. For silent meditation, prayer, followed by the best decisions and then we'll do the approval of the minutes for October 24th, 2019.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm going to review the minutes.
Yes.
And a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. At 9:05, we have an appointment with Lieutenant Paul Mark Davis, Uptown County Deputy, update on implementation of the Drug Abuse Resistance Education, also known as the DARE Program. At 9:15, we have an appointment with Mike Cozad and Jason Harshberger, update on the Atlantic Coast Pipeline Project. At 9:30, proclamation recognizing E-911 telecommunicators as first responders. At 11 o'clock, we have an appointment with Clayton J., Assistant Assistant Law Department of DLLC, updating the pending void litigation via conference call and may lead to executive session for Western Virginia 6-98-4. 1 o'clock, we have a continuing discussion regarding the options for utility installation on Route 33 West of Buchanan. At 3 o'clock, we have a board assessment appeal, telephonic hearing for Pringle House LP, and it's on their 20th evaluation. It's 9:05, Mr. Davis, come up and give us an update.
Good morning.
About a year and a half ago, Sheriff Kaufman and I began to discuss about bringing the DARE program back into the school system in Uptown County because of the need for the education of young people to make good decisions regarding drug and alcohol abuse and awareness. And this has been a program that our county has had in the past. It's been about a 17-year gap, but we want to bring it back because we see the need that needs to be addressed. We have an officer in our department, Crystal Lehner, who agreed to become a DARE officer. And with the, with her agreement to do that, the Family Resource Network in Harrison County, Elizabeth Shanahan, was a big help to get on board with us behind this project. And we were able to send Crystal to Maryland, Sykesville, Maryland, for her training, which she successfully completed and did an excellent job of that. And we are, right now, we've got the materials, we got her training completed, and are ready to start in January of 2020 to launch the DARE program at the sixth grade level of the elementary school, or the middle school, excuse me. The Board of Education has been very cooperative and behind us in doing this, they're on board with this completely, they've been helping us with, with everything to get the scheduling done, just have done everything that they can possibly do to make this happen. So it's been a community effort, it's been a lot of teamwork that's been put into it, a lot of, a lot of work as far as the training, but as of today, it is ready to go, starting in January in the sixth grade level to middle school. So we're excited about that. And to all of them, to everyone that has helped and commissioned and been behind this, and we appreciate that so much, the Board of Education and all the work that they've done to get on board with it, the Family Resource Network in Harrison County, just tremendous. And I, I just, I'm really amazed at how everybody could just come together to make this happen. It's the youth of our community, we're looking ahead at the future decisions that they're going to be making. And I truly believe, if we get these kids, we win. And this is going to be the step to get back into doing that. Have any, any questions?
How many days a week will, does it, will that happen when she begins in January?
We are looking at, it's a 10-week program that she'll be teaching, and she's been working with the principal there on school to get it scheduled together. She has to be, it has to kind of work between what she does here in court and what the school has, but they, the school has just been over backwards to make this scheduling available. So she'll be teaching pretty much three to four days a week, probably to get this, get all the sixth grade kids talk.
Mark? I believe the young lady in back of the room, you probably all recognize too.
Yes, Elizabeth Shanahan, she, she had phoned and contacted me when she heard we were putting this together, she did a, she's a big, big help to us.
Do you mind if I share my name? Thank you for having me, thanks for inviting me. My name's Elizabeth Shanahan, I'm the Executive Director of Harrison County Family Resource Network, soon to be West Virginia Prevention Solutions. So we've changed a little bit because we no longer cover just Harrison County, we cover 13 counties in north central West Virginia, and we're one of six prevention lead organizations in the state, covering all 55 counties. We're funded federally from SAESA, the Substance Fees Medical Services Administration. And anytime there's an opportunity to engage with partners in any community that we have, that we are engaged with in our counties, we are able to allocate those federal dollars down to the grassroots level in communities to meet needs. As long as the evidence, the evidence is there that supports the program, that is an evidence-based program, or that is an evidence-based strategy, we help them do it. We, we're glad to be part of Uptown County and make things happen.
Is the US appropriate for the, for your?
We are, it's not hard, but, but we do support anything that's an after-school or informal supports that's outside and above the school system. We do put a lot of weight on schools today to make, do our education in our schools, but we as a community really have to have a community that's ready to receive the kids back to us. Once they do their job and do it really well, those kids have to go back into a community. So any of that support that we can help start, continue, make sure are happening, give programs to, give resources to, all of that stuff, we, we try to make happen.
I appreciate you.
Thank you so much, and she's always been.
We represent Dr. Stankis and J. A. Protagonist, and we appreciate you guys coming out.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you working with them and bringing this project on board. Crystal. Thank you, if you have anything you'd like to say, I'll put you on the spot. Pleasure, James.
Mark's already put you on the spot. All right. I just need you to bear with me a little bit, I'm new to public speaking, but first I want to start off by thanking the Uptown County Board of Education, Sheriff Kaufman, Lieutenant Davis, and the Uptown County Commission for giving me this chance to be a DARE officer. I was approached by Lieutenant Davis back early summer about becoming a DARE officer, and I did hesitate, I did say yes. I work in the circuit courts, I see what drugs do to families every day, and it's awful. In September, I went to a two-week, 80-hour training, that was the toughest training I have ever in my life been to, but that was a training that I absolutely love and I took a lot from. I had great mentors, along with my 32 peers, there was 33 of us total in this class, we learned how to teach this curriculum the way it needs to be taught. Our goal is to teach kids about making good choices and about having a positive interaction with law enforcement. With these lessons, the students will learn how to practice tough, practical decision-making activities with other students, they'll learn how to do that kind of stuff for themselves. There's, it's 10 lessons, my goal is to have everything taught by the end of April, I'll have about 43 kids per class, which is a bigger class than what I want, but with me starting in January, that's the only way I can do it, to get all my lessons in. The principal has been great working with me, the judges are great working with me, but my goal is to get these lessons taught, make them as fun as possible, and to have a positive impact on these kids' lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Moving on for items for discussion, action, or approval. One, consideration of a revised resolution given to two Commissioner Fire Trucks, 1996 Neil, Great Liner Pumper, pin number 186JLCB, 6TL, 682573, 1003, Henworth Pumper, pin number 2NKMHZ8X33M387293, located within the Buchanan Fire Department, Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department, per West Virginia Coast, 7-3-3.
During your September 5th meeting, you signed what was an essence and combination of the two resolutions you have on the agenda today. After various discussions between Commissioner Timmy and city officials, they requested that the two were separated. They didn't feel comfortable with the gifting of the fire department trucks in combination with other $10,000 allocation in the city, because they felt like the city should sign for the $15,000 allocation, which is understandable. So our attorney has separated the two, you have the first resolution that you just read, and then the second resolution would not go into effect unless the first resolution is signed by the volunteer fire department. So there'd be the gifting of the fire truck to the fire department, and then as long as that's signed and approved by both entities, then the resolution for the consideration of $15,000 annually, every year during your budget hearings, would go into effect so long as it is also signed by both parties.
We can approve the, the second one pending approval of the first one.
Yes. Or it makes like sure, or like, what was your part, yes.
The fire department has a meeting on November 14th, and I would like to make a motion to move forward with the resolution and paperwork being signed by November 15th, since they have that meeting then on the 14th, that evening.
So the paperwork's signed with the city on November 15th?
For the fire department, remember, for the first part of November 14th, if you think that's reasonable.
Yeah. A second.
If we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Two, consideration of a resolution setting forth the Commission's intent to allocate $15,000 to the City of Buchanan for fire response within the first two fire service zones beginning in fiscal year 2021, pending annual budgetary approval.
We approve half of these, all the signature, all the first reservations.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. It's 9:15, and we have an appointment with Mike and Jason, glad you guys have the time off.
So, good morning, commissioners, it's been a while since we've formally been here. My name is Mike Cozad, I'm the Community Leader, I don't know if you guys all know me, been around here for two years doing this job, I'm located here in Buchanan, so I've kind of become a regular here around town. Thought we'd introduce Jason Harshberger, he is taking over for Bob Hornendorf as the West Virginia Public Affairs Director for the state. He took that position once September 1st, and he'll be addressing you and giving you an update on where we stand with the events that have occurred over the last few months regarding court issues and things like that. So, thank you for letting us be here today, and Jason, it's all yours.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity, I know you guys have seen Bob Hornendorf with regards to the state ACP project, and also other activities regarding Dominion Energy in our state and your county. He has reached that, that age of retirement, and he's offered to take that route, so as of September 1st, I was interviewed, I offered the job September 1st. Just to give you a little information, being a West Virginia native, living on a farm in Ritchie County, I've been with Dominion Energy about 14 years, so I'm very familiar with the company operations, I've worked in the environmental side and our gas storage side, so it was nice then to look for somebody internally and hire somebody internally that's one, a West Virginia native, and also very familiar with the company operation. But I just want to take this opportunity to, also to thank you guys for your service. I've been an elected official before, so I know what it's like to be in the shoes of you guys, campaigning, meet with your constituents, and, you know, the positives and the negatives go along with being an elected official, so I do appreciate your service to the county and your constituents. Just to give you a quick update on ACP, two main things I'll touch on is the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the U.S. Forest Service. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife, we received a permit called a taking permit, which is done through some studies, a biological study and an incidental take study. It was challenged, so it was taken up to the Fourth Circuit, and they vacated our permit. So basically, the court, the court determined that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife didn't do enough investigation and studies with regards to, we ran into the Rusty Patch Bumblebee and an ice pod, so the U.S. Court, Fourth Circuit, vacated our permit. So this whole summer, over the year, we've been working with contractors, doing additional studies to identify the population of the Rusty Patch Bumblebee and other species that were brought up in this court case. So we have our new permits and stuff back for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, so we're very optimistic that by the end of this year, we'll have a decision and new permits issued by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. The other one that's out there right now is the Appalachian Trail. The U.S. Forest Service issued a permit for us to cross the Appalachian Trail with our pipeline. This was going to be done through a bore, which was about 650 feet below the trail, we're not disturbing the trail at all. Right now, there's approximately 62 pipelines that go underneath the Appalachian Trail. So our president's already been set with pipelines, but our permit was once again challenged and taken to the Fourth Circuit in Richmond and Virginia, and they vacated our permit on that. So we have made an appeal to the U.S. Supreme Court to hear our case. We found out about a month ago, the U.S. Supreme Court will take our case up, most likely be February timeframe on their docket, and we're looking possibly June of having a ruling on that. We're very optimistic, we believe the facts are in our, our court, and that once we receive full authorization from the U.S. Supreme Court and their decision, we'll be back into full construction sometime next summer. So that's the two big issues we've been faced, as you guys are aware, we have a big office here in Buchanan, and we have a yard just outside of town here, we have a lot of people itching to go to work, and it's, it's an economic driver of our state. So I'll leave in some time here for questions, if you guys have any questions regarding this project.
When you start back to work, how long do you project the completion?
We're estimating about near the 2021.
2021?
Yeah.
If you were to get started.
Okay.
That's if you were to get started.
Yeah, if we start by next summer.
So if we win the, the case in December for the bees, would that allow you to go back to work, or you can't start working?
It depends on when that, when it comes out, when we issue, when we receive those permits from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, what time of year it is. If we'd like to pursue some tree cutting on the right away, but all depends on the timing of when those new permits are received.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Okay, and Mike, you know, has been here on this project for a couple years, so he's been very involved in our community, so if you guys have any further questions or any, you need any outreach, you're involved, means contact Mike or myself, I pass out some business cards there. And it was nice to meet you guys and appreciate your service, and I'm sure we'll see you around again.
Okay.
Okay, you guys have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, we'll continue with items for discussion, action, or approval. Item number three, correspondence from Governor Jim Justice announcing the victims of crime act, also known as the vote good grant award, the amount of $36,380 to be used to provide direct services to crime victims in Uptown County. Approval for Sandy Arnold T., Commissioner President has signed a contract agreement standard of special conditions certification resolution through this spring. Now, I entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Four, approval and signature of service contract with Cleveland Brothers to perform semi-annual service and annual maintenance service for the engine generator and chinset located at the E-911 Communication Center. The total cost for the 2019 agreement is $1,390. The total cost for 2020 agreement will be $2,610, and the total cost for the 2021 agreement will be $2,660. The agreement includes all parts, travel time, mileage, and labor for two inspections each year. County Commission, Uptown County Commission reserves the right to term any agreement for any reason at any time.
Is that a double, that, that's one of the contracts?
I have it here to review, and just so you know, there was an omission in item number four, that's not only the E-911 center generator, it's also the Conso Radio Tower Generator, because there are two on there, not just the one.
Which is $1390 in 2019, is that the new generator?
Yes.
And it's going to double it, 2020?
It does, yes. We can review this further if you'd like, after you get to the rest of your agenda.
Yeah, sure, we can do that. Okay, five, approval of the revised Uptown County part-time employment employee timesheet, approval will be effective the first payroll in January of 2020.
I move to approve.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Six, discussion regarding a successor to David E. Gottman prosecuting attorney, item 82, executive session for West Virginia 6-98 action.
I'd also like to wait until the end of the meeting to do this, so everybody doesn't have to go in and out, maybe use it on the second session.
Okay, I think that would be good. Okay, with that there?
Yeah.
For your information, certain items may require discussion, action, and/or approval by the Commission. One, correspondence from Lindsay Woody, Office Manager at the Adrian Public Service District, announcing that during the October 2019 Board of Directors meeting, it was approved to change their monthly, the monthly meeting from the second Thursday of the month at 10:00 a.m. to the first Thursday of the month at 3:00 p.m. to accommodate their new Vice Chairman, Carolyn Douglas. Two, Uptown County Fire Board getting financial statement for July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Three, Uptown County Fire Board getting financial statements, independent auditors report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. Copies are available for public inspection in the office of the Uptown County Commission upon request. Four, Elkins Road Public Service District Independent Audit for Fiscal Year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Copies are also available for public inspection in the office of the Uptown County Commission upon request. Five is public notices. Six is appointments needed or upcoming, which we don't have any, and then tabled items, certain items may require discussion, action, and/or approval by the Commission. One, appearing upon the petition complaint of the Uptown County Safe Sites and Structures Enforcement Agency, Chapman, Case Number 10111801, Warren Tax, District Tax Map, 6B, carter number 11.
So I'm at Sheriff Kaufman this week, and it looks like this case will be closed, and I should board next week, so I should be able to provide an update at that time.
Okay, thank you. We still have five minutes before our next appointment, so we'll just pay some bills and then I'll go come up. How you doing?
Good, how are you guys?
Okay, it's 9:29, and we have a proclamation recognizing E-911 telecommunicators as first responders.
911 Public Safety Telecommunicators Confirmation. Whereas 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators serve 24 hours a day, seven days a week, the same as firefighters, law enforcement officers, and emergency medical service workers. And whereas 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators make the same sacrifices in their personal lives as firefighters, law enforcement officers, and emergency medical service workers by leaving their families, friends, and the safety of their surroundings to handle the emergency 911 calls that save the lives, protect the property, and ensure the safety of our community during weather, chemical, and other emergency events. And whereas 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators heroically answer 911 emergency calls around the clock, whereby they give medical guidance, instruct callers on staying safe in difficult situations, and help callers to safety during disasters, all by prompting dispatching field first responders to set emergency situations for the callers. And whereas 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators must handle the stress of answering over half a million calls each year, one call after another, daily, often being the voice on the other end of the call as citizens experience the worst day of their lives. They hear the cries of devastation, listen to the screams for help, and are the support as citizens cope with the loss of a loved one. Public Safety Telecommunicators handle all of this at the very same time that they keep their fellow emergency responders in the field safe. And whereas to honor the men and women who serve in this crucial position, we recognize these individuals throughout Uptown County by proclaiming to consider them true first responders. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Uptown County Commission hereby proclaims that this recognition be effective immediately upon adoption of this proclamation presented by the Uptown County Commission dated the 31st day of October 2019.
Thank you, Carrie.
Do you want to speak, William?
Sure.
We offer a proclamation, I entertain a motion.
I'm, I'm, I might say this, you know, I can remember a time before 911, and before emergency squad, or 911 center, and you called the local funeral home, and they came out of emergency, and I remember, I was probably about six years old, and I was watching Fred Wilk's film, Rush, up on the road, and he just about cut his leg off, but he stepped into his ass, and I went home to get my mother, and they called the funeral home, that's who came out, so. A lot of times we take you all for granted, but I remember a time when you weren't there, and I'm glad you're there, man.
We appreciate that. I am really thankful that you guys took this under consideration. You guys have always showed us a lot of support, and we really, we really do appreciate that. This is one of the things that I brought up to Carrie in our annual meeting, and she seemed very receptive to it. But this all really stems from a national movement. There is a national movement right now on the Hill in Washington, D.C., it's House Resolution Bill 1629, which was introduced by Senator Torres, Democrat out of California, and Senator Fitzpatrick out of Pennsylvania, who's a Republican, so it's a bipartisan bill to formally recognize 911 telecommunicators at the federal level as a first responder. Currently, they're classified as secretaries, which is, in my opinion, a great disgrace to what we do every day. And it's very interesting, Senator Torres was actually a former telecommunicator in California, and Senator Fitzpatrick was an FBI agent, and he was also a federal prosecutor. So they've had a lot of interactions with 911 telecommunicators, which is House Bill 1629, which is called the 911 Saves Act. So when I brought this up to Carrie, you know, I said, no, it would be really nice for us to be locally recognized, because 911, in my opinion, serves locally, right? We're a part of these communities, we're a part of, you know, we assist our law enforcement fire, EMS every day, and so it really warms my heart, I know it warms Kimber's heart, this was one of the things that she was really pushing for, and to get accomplished this year or next year. So it really gives me a great sense of pride that you guys support us to the level, you know, proclaiming us as first responders, and it makes me even more proud, and we're at the forefront of this in the state of West Virginia, because to date, there is only one other county that has formally recognized their telecommunicators as first responders, and that is Canallo County. So I think that, you know, it should give everybody in Uptown County a great sense of pride that we're leading in the forefront of this movement, not only for our own communities, but for the state of West Virginia, so. Any more to say, Nick?
I'd just like to thank the County Commission for the continued support of our 911 center. Our employees know what they do every day, what they go through, and it helps me to know that you guys see that also. We just want to thank you guys for your support, I really appreciate it.
We appreciate your support.
Thank you, guys.
You guys are doing incredible. You guys do an incredible job and I've learned a ton since I've come on the commission. Like folks don't really understand how much goes into being a telecommunicator.
Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it.
You guys want to come up and maybe get a picture?
Oh yeah, absolutely. If you guys have one.
So if you recall, about a year, a year and a half ago, you re-signed your agreement with the DOH for the Conneville Radio Tower. Prior to that time, we were not under the understanding that we were responsible for maintaining the grounds inside those, that fence or the generator that's located there. So following that understanding, Greg has added the generator, added Conneville Radio Tower to this agreement. The agreement you signed last year was only for the N91 Center generator. And it was, let me spell this once again. And the amount of...
$1,268.
$1,268.30 last year. That was one PM, one inspection and one PM, two inspection, which you can see on this old agenda that those two things, they do different types of maintenance every time they're there. So this agreement in 2019, it would be a level two inspection for both systems. And then starting in 2020, it would be an annual and a semi-annual inspection. And that's why it doubles in price. So I spoke with Greg and he does not feel comfortable only having annual inspection on a generator because so much to happen to a generator within a full one-time span.
I'd like your motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Let's see here, the next item would be discuss, discussion regarding a successor for David E. Godwin prosecuting attorney. Item A lead to executive session for West Virginia Chapter 6-98 action.
I can make a motion in the executive session.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Going to executive session.
This is for prosecuting attorney. I spoke with Kelly County Commissioner. And Kelly advised me, she, at this time, she wasn't interested in this position. She really likes her assistant prosecuting job. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we notify the local board members, we have to be of the Republican Party.
Local board?
The local board, yeah. And add them to turn their requests in if they're interested in the job resumes, whether by 4:30 PM November 6th at our office, 91 West Main Street. And we will review on the 7th. And have an interview for November 14th. And hopefully, likely make an appointment by, on, on November 21st.
Second, that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Do you want to gather all that?
That appointment would be effective December 1st at 11:00 a.m.
Letters of interest by the 6th. Review on the 7th. Announce on the 14th.
An interview on the 14th.
Interview on the 14th, yes.
So interview on the 14th, not announce on the 14th.
Correct. An interview on the 14th and make our decision on the 11th.
I was trying to keep up with the conversation.
And a test of you.
Because they'll have December 1st. Then of course, that position, people will definitely be up for reelection. You know, they'll be able to file in January to, you know, if there's other people that don't want to go to that office.
And is it permanent or something?
And that would be, yes. Yeah, is that what you're...
Yeah. Summer of permanent employment. And I'd like to thank David Godwin for giving us plenty of time to be able to work
I think that's it. We just have a, yeah, we have an appointment at 11:00. We're going to executive session. I'd like to go around the room just to introduce everyone so when people get up to speak, you kind of know who they're with and who they're representing. Start with Robbie here.
Robbie Skinner with Mountain Lakes Insurance Agency and a member of City Council.
Randy Sanders with the City Council, City Report.
Jerry Arnold, City of Buchanan.
Amy Jenkins, City of Buchanan.
Jay Holland, City of Buchanan.
Tom O'Neil, City of Buchanan.
Mark Sankoff, Petestin.
Buck Samples, City of Buchanan.
Greg Hedges, JF Island Company.
Tyler Beatty, JF Island Company.
Dave Anderson, Corridor H Tire.
Tammy Rager from Breckford, Buchanan, House of Chamber of Commerce.
Shane White here, Director of Region 17 of Department Counselor.
Ken Sanford, Buchanan Citizen.
Karen Sanford, Buchanan Citizen.
Jerry Merle with Way of Holland, his church from 33.
Tim Shaw, Norman's Development.
Travis Shaw, Norman's Development.
Bob Roedekker, representing County Commission.
Terry Gold, County State.
Dave Watson, the Thresher Group.
Randy Watson, the Thresher Group.
Carrie Wallace, Upstate County Administrator. Carol Smith, County Clerk.
Carrie got right. We have the media down here, I believe. Media as well? Yes, sir. Right, so. Appreciate it, Bobby. Bob is going to kind of give us a little recap of what we left off and why we were here again for that.
Thank you, members of the commission. Again, Bob Roedekker, Attorney from Charleston with the law firm Kate Caston Chaney, PLL C. I've been asked by the County Commission to assist them in matters that are and have been under discussion for some time regarding service to the area west of the city of Buchanan. And at the last meeting, there was a motion made that died for the lack of a second to expand the boundaries of the Tenerton PSD in order to permit the Tenerton PSD can provide sewer service in that area that had been under discussion. Following that, that motion, there was further discussion and it was, according to my notes, there was a desire to have today's hearing and meeting address the issue of the expansion into that area and for the city to provide information pertaining to the surcharge approach to funding of an extension of the city's facilities into that area. I also, at that last meeting, explained that the expansion of public service district's boundaries is an action taken by the County Commission in order to permit an entity that is a public service district to provide service in that area. It is not establishing an obligation on their part, other than, on the part of the PSD to serve that area, other than when there is a request made, they have a public service obligation to respond to that and to provide service if possible, if it's not in competition with a public service, I'm sorry, municipality already providing service in that area. And that's been established by a Supreme Court decision out of Bertham County with regard to an annexed area. The court determined that the municipality had the preference, the priority to provide service in an annexed area where they've been providing service. This is an area that has not been annexed and there's decisions at the Public Service Commission that indicate where two utilities can provide service. It's often up to the customer's choice as to whom they prefer to have service provided by. But as far as the commission, the County Commission's role in this matter at this time, it's my understanding that we're here today from the city and interested parties as to the potential for service, when it can be provided, how it can be provided. If the County Commission determines that it would like to have the opportunity for a public service district to serve in that area for sewer service, they would have to expand the boundaries of the Tenerton PSD. Ms. Wallace has provided me with documents that show that in 1976, the Highsfield Public Service District was granted authority by the County Commission to provide service, which, water service, which appears to include the areas that are under discussion and therefore there would apparently not be any need to address an adjustment of their boundaries.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, it's good to be with you again. I prefer with pretty much everything that was said. So we're here today to, to discuss some of the information that's been collected and discuss matters that have been undertaken by the city to look into extending service through the Buchanan Sanitary Board for sanitary sewer service in the area that has been under discussion. I'll give a, I'll give kind of an overview and then I defer to the number of individuals who can speak more in detail, particularly Mr. Samson with Petestin, talk about the scope of the, of the project that is being discussed. I'd like to mention a couple of things off the bat. The Buchanan Sanitary Board met two weeks ago today and approved essentially what we're calling Phase One of the project that's been under discussion, which would be service, extending the sanitary sewer service to the north side of Corridor H area out to Mr. Anderson's property. Is that, that's correct? That's about as far as that Phase One, we'll call it for, just for utilitarian purposes, we'll call that Phase One, north side. That project has been estimated to cost $300,000. The Sanitary Board has committed to pay itself for $100,000 of that project and has voted to pursue through the Public Service Commission a surcharge model by which it would recover the costs of itself financing the other $200,000 service. What precisely that surcharge model will look like is ultimately up to the Public Service Commission. There have been a couple of essentially back of the envelope calculations that have been made, but, but to be frank, I don't think that those are, you know, anything that we can kind of take to the bank press plate. But the important point is that the Sanitary Board is willing to finance the costs of that north side extension, Phase One, finance $200,000 of it, pay out of pocket another $100,000 for it, and finance that $200,000 through a surcharge cost recovery model, the details of which will be, will be subject to fund approval with the Public Service Commission. One other thing that we'll be discussing is that the balance of the project, that being the south side of Corridor, the Corridor H area and the residential components of this project have all been priced by the city of Buchanan. And our estimate is that the city can undertake, the Sanitary Board, I should say, can undertake that entire project for approximately $5.2 million.
Yes.
And we can get into a little bit more of the details of that as, as questions may elicit.
That water and sewer, huh?
That's just sewer. We have not made, you know, the water component of this is kind of a late addition and I don't think we're, I can't, I'm not prepared to speak on the half the water board, but I do know that there is an interest in allowing this line of water for to serve this area. With respect to the residential component of the project, the city of Buchanan undertook a survey of customers, potential customers in that area, surveyed 142, 342 potential customers in the identified area. Only 24% of those individuals indicated an interest in having sanitary sewer service go through there. We can get into the details of that if you'd like to. But, but with only a 24% positive response rate, it's our opinion that that portion of the project is probably not viable at present. We're certainly not in the business of extending service to residential areas where people don't want it, especially in the case where they may have, pardon me, made substantial private investments in irrigation systems or septic tank systems. And then, as you all know, of course, once a sanitary sewer line goes through, state law mandates the property owners suck up to it. There is not a, once that line goes through, there's no choice in matter in terms of property owners. So we are very cognizant of what the level of public interest is, particularly in a residential area before a line extension goes through. And that 24% positive response rate is something that is a very important fact to consider on the residential component side of this. Obviously, when it comes to the commercial side of these projects, Phase One being the north side, Phase Two being the south side, there is almost universal interest in having a line through. So that public interest portion of it is not a, it is not a primary driver, consideration or anything on anyone's concern, but on this residential side, that's, that's an important factor that needs to be taken into account. I'll yield for Mr. Sankoff to talk a little bit about what, what the city extension project would look like. I certainly have, if you have any questions.
I got a question.
Absolutely.
The fact point two, does that include the $300,000?
Yes. That's the, that's the number, that's a whole project.
My name is Mark Sankoff, I'm Chief Engineer for Petestin Associates, it's only from Mount Charleston. And we've been working with the Buchanan Sanitary Board since 2013 on both the north side and the south side up to Corridor H Tire. So I am very familiar with that portion of the project. The city of Buchanan has looked at these areas since 2013. They had the topographical maps prepared, we prepared the design for both the north and the south. And the city has gone as far as to purchase the old railroad right away through there. So along the north side so that, so that they could extend sewer along that north side at the, at the best location. The city has, has a existing pump station by, over there by the huddle house and the hotel and plans on extending along the south side, along, along the corridor, but does not have to cross the corridor. So I took, the pressure was, was good enough to provide their estimates, so I took their estimates and, and their map that they provided and subtracted out the areas that, that Buchanan had already, has already served through their design. And then I added, so I took their estimates, subtracted out the areas that were already served and then added back in what Buchanan was going to charge for their estimate for both the north side and the south side, south side up to the Shaws and the north side up to Corridor H Tire. And so subtracted out those areas and then added it back in. And we're looking at, looking at a total project cost of $5.2 million. So, which serves the same areas, detailed design, I'm sure for both, both companies would modify slightly, but we're in the same ballpark. I can't argue with their, with their numbers. Any questions?
Mark, your question? You hinted that you... Mark, your question, you hinted that you, you took the pressure numbers, am I correct that that's the same document, the preliminary construction cost estimate that they presented to the last meeting?
Yes.
And there was $5.1 billion?
Yes, but it, but it also adds the south side, which was, our cost was over $400,000.
Okay. So that would be the primary adjustment that you made too, to somebody was adding that in, Mark?
Well, subtracted out some things that, that I thought was, that was went on the north side also.
Okay. Do you have a document that does that, that shows that?
I don't have something to hand out today.
I make one, I forgot to make, I'm sorry. The anticipated completion date for Phase One would be approximately one year from now.
Approximately what?
No, just for Phase One, would be one year from now.
Have you discussed maybe the whole project, what the idea would be?
We have. I think with Phase Two, we've probably done it following construction season, so probably two years from now, but, and the residential portion of it would take a little bit longer, probably additional one and a half to two seasons, is that fair to say?
Yes, but we didn't, because we've got such low customer signups, we have.
The caveat that we didn't, we didn't invest a great deal of time on the residential component because of the low positive response rate.
So Mr. O'Neil, what would happen in Phase Two?
Phase Two would be the south side, that would be the J and Fallon, and, did you say when or what?
That's what would happen in Phase Two?
Phase Two is that south side of the project?
Yes, just sewer only.
Just still sewer?
That price is, that's sewer only, it's water, that's not a, that's not a.
What would your search argue?
We're not, I mean, we can't, we don't know right now, because it's subject to final Public Service Commission approval, and there are a number of factors we just don't, we just don't get. How is it going to count, is it going to be a liter fee or lot size? That decision hasn't been made yet, for instance.
So when there is a surcharge, where does the funding come from?
We would borrow locally, the Sanitary Board would borrow locally, and then use the surcharge to recoup the borrowing cost.
The cost.
Yes, well, the, the surcharge itself may not, the length of time that the surcharge would go on would reduce as additional customers came online. The surcharge itself, unless there was a wave that, where it came on, that could, that could problem, I'm sure that could be revisited by the Public Service Commission typically, how these work, is that if you have a greater than anticipated customer sign on, it reduces the length of the surcharge rather than the amount of the surcharge.
And you say out of 142 customers that you, how many actually responded?
Let me, let me deal with Jay, talk a little bit.
Darn you.
Yeah, just a slight correction, it was 147 residential structures that could potentially be served through, you know, the proposed project based upon pressure scoping area, and only 43% of the people responded to the survey. It was a simple one-page survey, and we asked them to return it to us within three weeks with a self-addressed stamped envelope, you know, all you had to do was answer five questions and turn it back, but of the 147, only 36 wanted the sewer.
And Jay, I'm sorry, how many turned it back in?
Forty-three percent, 63, I believe there were six, yeah, I think it's 63 of the 147 replied back, either speaking directly with Jerry Buck and I on the, the ninth of October, or returning the envelopes back in, the surveys back into us.
And how many said yes?
Thirty-six total out of the 147 residential structures that could, could be, residential and commercial structures that can be served. And that does not include the nine that we're talking about in Phase One, because we know that those are yeses.
So about 50% of respondents do?
Yeah, I think maybe just a little bit higher. The, we count non-respondents as no, because if somebody wanted it, they would respond.
We might count non-respondents as yes. When we have a vote here, if they don't respond, it's a yes vote.
Well, in the utility world.
And Jay, have you, I mean, have you thought about or discussed at all the timeframe or idea, I'm not expecting you to give us a number or to give everyone a number, but about water?
I mean, we've, we've been working on the water, Christie, since 2013, 2014. We have a layout, we have a line, and I have a cost estimate for the south side only, there's no water issues, you know, there is public water available on the north side.
Right.
So the south side water at this time is about 450, it's just over $450,000.
And is that down to the shawls?
That serves the three properties on the south side.
Okay, and then?
You have Fallon, Norwens, and Windham.
So, that's $450,000, do you have a timeframe of how long it would take?
The board hasn't brought that, you know, the water, we're working out with their boards, you know, now we're on the water board, that has not been brought up yet.
One of the things, one of the things to be considered, and I know Jay's an engineer, but he doesn't have a crystal ball.
Right.
We don't know what the demand of the water is going to be there. So if you need 1,000 gallons a minute fire flow, planning for construction of and funding of is going to be completely different from a 500 gallon amount of fire flow. So again, it's kind of hard to put throw numbers at something that we're not sure what we're, what we're doing. What's that development going to be?
Well, that's, would be my question back to Jay and Tom on how you would assess the surcharge for this Phase Two, 400,000, because you don't know what's out there, and presumably even by state law, if I don't have a building, I'm not tapping in. Are you going to put it all on the shawls?
The surcharge, the surcharge we're talking about is only on sewer, we're not talking about the surcharge on, on water.
Right, but if you're going to put a $400,000 line across my property to get to his active businesses, is he going to carry the entire cost of that?
Well, this is what, these are all considerations that go into whether or not the line is run, and if, if there is only one party that's interested in service, at least at first, how that property is brought on a line is going to be handled differently. It could be brought on, on a line that parallels the highway on the south side, frankly, that is probably from an engineering perspective, I don't want to get over my skis here, but that's the one that makes the most sense.
But that path.
But that's not the only way to skin the cat.
That's right, you can go across, you could bore across, but in looking at Podesta's design initially, didn't consider that DOH actually owned that property that Podesta was.
Sanitary and sewer water, we're mixing the two projects, so I just want to make sure that we're talking apple to apple. I mean, you know, Christie's question was regarding the water, you know, and so, you know, that was my answer, the $450,000. We put the guard in in about a year, so I would expect more than 18 to 24 months for the water, you know, depending on the weather and the, and the seasons and our prior commitments, but I will let Mark talk more about the sewer. I mean, I don't know if I'm understanding your question correctly, because I was answering Christie's water question and not necessarily the surcharge and how we get, you know, the south side sewer.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
But I'm just picking up on the logic from the north side, I assume you're going to apply the same logic to the south side.
We don't, I mean, this is, this has not been brought up, how, how the finance, you know, the south side water has not been brought up at the water board. You know, they know that it's an active project, and we're looking at alternate designs and layouts and considering varying fire flows, but it's not moved to that.
So you'll go, you'll go forward for a vote of the commercial customers on the south side like you did with the residential?
What do you mean by vote by?
Well, I mean, what if we wanted to take our sewer from, from the public service district instead of the city?
Well, it's a little bit more complicated than that. I mean, the, the Public Service Commission is the one that will ultimately make the decision.
Understood, but presumably they'll, the citizens out there, the commercial interests will add some input to that, right?
I guess it depends on how much weight the Public Service Commission would give to it, but I, I mean, everybody will have a say in the matter. The question then is what, what makes the most sense from a cost and operational standpoint? And frankly, I think the other, what, I mean, let's get down to the really bottom line of what's, what's going to happen here. The fundamental question, I think, is who's going to pay to run the lines through to service these properties? That's really what, what this is kind of all about. And, and one model that we're talking about is to put that cost on Tenerton's existing customers. And the other is whether it's through upfront contribution or through a surcharge model, whether the benefiting parties are going to bear the cost of that improvement to the property. And, you know, so, I mean, everything else is just kind of a variation on that, that question, and.
Well, there's a follow-on question, and that's annexation.
Well, that's an option, but it's an option that requires consent. You know, the city is not in a position where it can annex property against, against everybody's will, meaning the property owners and the county commission. If, if both the property owners and the county commission oppose annexation, then the city's hands are well tied.
Okay, so let's, let's play this out on the north side. You're basically going forward with that project, which then by law will mandate the 10 or 11 customers to have to sign on. Now, now talk about annexation. Do we still have a vote?
Of course, I mean, I mean, annex, the presence or absence of a sanitary sewer line does not change the legal requirements for annexation. Frankly, in a lot of cases, a lot of communities, the line is an inducement to get property owners to consent to annexation. That's not, that's not what we're talking about here, though. I mean, the line is, the line is a separate issue from annexation. The only, the only reason that annexation comes into play here is that the city has made a commitment that if a property owner wants to be annexed, the city itself, meaning the general fund of the city, will finance the line extension, and then there won't be a cost. If, if the, if the property owners want a no-cost line extension, the answer is annexation. If, if, if annexation is off the table, then the question is who pays and how much?
Is it typical that you, you did in the past where there is a surcharge also for water?
It would be before my time, Christie. I don't think we, yeah, I don't think we've ever done one for a water.
We have a sewer surcharge right now.
Right, but she was asking for water, and I said, I cannot think of one for water.
So, and I understand, Jay, I'm, you know, spot, you don't have those fingers, so I'm just thinking, it doesn't do that much good with sewer and not water, so I'm just, I'm just looking ahead here, so with the water situation, what would maybe the ideas be? Would that be for a possible surcharge, or what's your thoughts, Jerry?
We haven't gone, I mean, we have, we have not even explored that yet, you know, it's not been brought up to the water board at, at all. But in principle, but in principle, I don't see why, I mean, this is just, I'm going to freelance here for a second. If, if, if a surcharge is, is acceptable for a sewer line extension, I don't understand why it wouldn't be, depending upon a lot of details that just aren't known yet, subject to how those come out and watch, why it wouldn't be, again, subject to the final approval of the Public Service Commission.
Ask Mr. O'Neil a question. I'm sure you keep saying subject to final commission approval by the PSC, is of both the surcharge and, and what?
Well, I'm not sure that the PSC needs to, if the, if the benefiting parties agree to underwrite the cost of the line extension, as, as has been discussed previously, I don't know, PSC has to get involved in that at all, but, but PSC has to approve a surcharge as part of our rate tariff.
So on a $5 million project, you're looking at a pretty significant.
Well, we're talking, that $5 million number is, again, bringing that residential component, and I would say that, that when we're talking about extending service to residential properties, there's a different calculus that comes into play. And, you know, the city has operated in the past and in this discussion, under the philosophy that, that, and we've discussed it here in past meetings, to what degree should the benefiting parties bear the costs of the line extension? Because the line extension itself, once it runs through, will markedly and immediately cause those property values to appreciate. And so in light of that increase in the property values that will be a consequence of the line, to what degree is it fair to expect the benefiting parties to pay the cost of that extension? The cities, or the sanitary boards, answer to that question has been, well, two-thirds. And, and how that is, how that cost is recovered is negotiable. Under the, under the PSD, under the Tenerton PSD model, it appears to me that, that the answer to that question would be current rate payers are going to underwrite the cost of that line extension, where the, where the benefiting parties will see a very substantial increase of value to those properties. And, and I don't think that the Sanitary Board necessarily feels that that's an equitable approach here. I think, I mean, political combinations are your own to make, but, you know, it's almost a term in a Democrat.
You have the idea?
Then we'd be paying for everybody.
The broader, the broader point, the broader point here is, you know, the Sanitary Board has agreed to pay for, let's, and just limiting the discussion of Phase One, sanitary boards agree to pay $100,000 for cost, and, and the Sanitary Board's philosophy is that two-thirds of that cost, $200,000, should be recouped by the benefiting parties, either upfront through a contribution or over time through a surcharge. And, and what precisely that surcharge will be is, you know, I hate to be broken record here, but subject to the final approval of the Public Service Commission.
I'm still not following you on this. What's the PSC's role in approving the surcharge? The surcharge, is that a part of the law, the main line extension agreement, is that what you're referring to?
I'm talking about, as part of our rate tariff, I mean, we would have to modify our rate tariff to include the surcharge for these, for the.
Okay, as you, as you provided in the letter to the PSC, Bacchanan is exempt from PSC approval for rates, so what is it?
Not for surcharges, though. We still, I, I'm, I am told that we still have, that we are still responsible for getting PSC approval for rate surcharges for projects like this. Now, if upon, if, if better legal minds than I conclude that, that we don't need to go to the PSC to approve that surcharge, then so be it, but my, I'm operating under the, you know, the assumption that, well, I'm under, operating under the, you know, the taken legal opinion that PSC has to approve those, even though, even though we are deregulated on that.
The PSC doesn't have regulations, you can raise your, your, or any one?
That's right, under a.
So that would claim maybe five. I think, I would have some sort of, your sur, your surcharge is higher than Tenerton's surcharge.
I think it might be a little bit higher, but we, but the state, the legislature passed a law in 2015.
15.
That because that certain municipal utilities that have a certain size customer base and certain revenue a year, we need those thresholds, no longer have to, see, can just do a thorough ordinance?
Involved?
Yeah.
It fits outside the city limits. I thought the PSC got back involved.
No, no. Not in regular access.
Are you planning to publicly bid these projects?
Well, with, at least with respect to Phase One, we're going to do that in-house.
Going to do that in-house.
Now, with respect to Phase Two, I know an alternative arrangement has been discussed, particularly with, with your company's property, that, you know, where there are property owner capabilities to do the construction, that those kind of agreements can be entered into, I certainly can't commit.
And have you considered doing Phase Two with water? Dig one ditch, just keep it by state law?
Officially or unofficially?
Unofficially.
I mean, this has all been, I mean, these are all been.
So it.
You know, ideas that.
We'd have to be separated by a minimum of 10 feet outside water, well, it says center line to center line, but I like. Well, it says centerline to centerline, but I like outside wall of pipe to outside wall of pipe, 10 feet. We have to be separated. Now, there are cases where we cross, and there are certain, you know, there's details, concrete encasement, all that, but...
But you're looking at two ditches.
Two ditches.
Greg, I can tell you, I'm a member of the Water Board and a voting member. Now, again, this is basically out of school, but I can tell you from my vantage point, and I know many of the other members of the Water Board, if this project were awarded to the city and we were able to do this from a sewer standpoint, I full-heartedly believe the Water Board would cooperate in, in moving this project forward to benefit the parties at bay. I believe that. I mean, as far as the specifics go, that's to be determined. But as far as the cooperation, we boards try to cooperate together to forward our, excuse me, our municipal progress. So I, I believe we would.
I have a hypothetical question. If Tenerton PSD would somehow come up and get this project, the railroad grades already paid for by the city, so is the city going to permit Tenerton PSD to route on the proposed grade?
Probably. I mean, again, I can't, I mean, I can't speak definitively for the board, but I would think not without compensation.
Well, that's interesting.
Yes, ma'am. An obligation to our rate payers to not give away the farm.
I'm here in Sanford, I live up on Forest View Estate, off of Buchanan Mountain Road. I was one of those that didn't return my questionnaire.
Were you yes or no?
Well, that depends. I wanted more information, and that's why I'm here. It sounds like there is consideration with moving water up there as well as sewage, possibly. Huh?
I was going to say, the water, you know, you'll have to talk to Terry with his Hodgsville PSD hat on, because that is outside the city's scope.
That's outside the city's, so nobody here would be involved with that?
No, not on the water side.
On the water side.
That is off my, that is Terry's alternate hat.
How do you bill sewage if you don't have water usage to measure?
That's where we got, that's, that's where, that's where we have it.
We have it in our tariffs and flat rate service.
It's flat rate?
Flat rate service.
Okay.
Because Tim and Tom would be in the same situation also, you know, because they currently don't have water.
Okay. A little bit more of the construction. My concern is my well is across the road. I'm worried about if there's sewage put up there, the sewer line crossing my water line. You had mentioned, somebody had mentioned that there needs to be 10 foot separated.
Horizontal, horizontal, 18 inches minimum in vertical direction.
Okay.
Normally, like, they have a water line on top of the sewer, so that, you know, if there is a leak, it's, you know, not...
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my...
But it's like, one's gravity and one's pressure, so they normally don't, you know, create such a conflict. If one doesn't break, it's not going to interfere with the other.
Right, but I'm looking at my water field, you know, because it's not just what's in my well, it's what's feeding my, my well, so I'm concerned about that, too. Just to, I, I know that I have neighbors that didn't respond because they were concerned about, well, we don't have water, so we need water, so...
You know, I was hoping that they would come. We gave everybody three weeks, and, you know...
I know, that's, that's why, I know, I know, and that's why I wanted to come here to the meeting and get more information. But, because there are several homes up there that are on well water, so, you know, I think if we could get water, we would be all on the sewer system going up there.
Gentlemen, where are you located?
Forest View Estates.
Up on top of the hill.
Way up on top of the hill.
You've contacted our office, right?
I did several years ago.
Yes.
Well, I've got inquiries in right now. They've been turned over to engineers to put water on top of the hill. What would it cost to extension up to get you all with?
Oh, okay.
With the new pressure pump system we've got up there now, we can't order a family here.
Okay, so it is being...
Mrs. Sanford, if I could ask a question. If sewage was put up there, you were, you had no choice but to get on, but to hook on, would you be okay with that? Or would you have reservations?
Um, it, I tell you, how much are we talking about? I mean, you know...
Well, it wouldn't matter. I mean, if the sewage goes through, you have to.
You have to do it.
If it was at 500 feet of gravity?
Would you and your neighbor be okay?
I would.
Okay.
I know I had one neighbor that responded, yes. I can't speak for everybody. If it ran up there and I had to hook on, I would.
I know, I know with the aeration system you just talked about now, I've had one since 1982. I've paid $50 a month since 1982. Because for them to be legal, you have to have a service company. And I've paid $50. Now, I've replaced three motors, which I paid $400 a piece for, paid them to come and put them on, plus the aeration shafts and one thing or another. You know, just because you've got an aeration system doesn't mean you don't have a sewer.
No, and, and again, I, you know, we're not opposed to residential production. We're just, I mean, we have to make a decision on proceeding based on data.
I, I just, I lived in a community where the public sewer came through, and I was shocked, because I was, I was chasing them with my check. I wanted my public sewer so bad, you know. They had, they had a meeting, and there were about 500 residents showed up. Man, it was wild. About, about 50% wanted it, 50% was absolutely that these are residents, not businesses. I rate that they were being forced to do something, and, you know, you hear the stories about my grandmother's 80 years old, and she's going to have to pay $2,000. You know, I, I thought it was interesting to watch, so I think that would be an interesting, interesting scenario.
Terry?
You must be a little brother, because my little brother used to do that to me all the time.
I'm around you. I was tired of beating him up.
Yes. Like she said, the biggest concern that we have is where the sewer's going to come in. Is it going to come in where potentially damage our, our well line and tilt water gets brought up to, to the hill? Because our well line actually runs under the, under the state road into our property.
I'm not very, very comfortable with that, but you got...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
He's worried about his...
The concern is, not sewer coming up, the concern is where the sewer's going to come in, into the, onto the, onto the right of way, because our well line runs under the state road from the lot on the other side.
I think I understand. I'll tell you what, with your septic tank, you run, take your risk of, you know, getting leakages into your well than you would with...
No, because the septic tank's almost 200 feet away from where the well is.
There would be no problem with that.
Devil's in the details of the design of it, but there's, like they said, they were correct. You've got to be 10 foot away from the sewer, above the water line, 18 inches of separation, but you can also make your water line or your sewer line ductal iron, you switch it to a steel pipe where you're, if you're too close. And you want your water to cop with the sewer.
Then who'd put that bill on us?
Well, we're going to, you're not responsible. You've got existing service, you wouldn't be responsible to pay for any of that.
Dave Watson from Brager, and when we went up here last time, we were to go back and look at the areas, and what I did was revise the cost estimate for the north side, a little bit for two separate projects. The north Route 30, two sag, serve businesses, approximately 130 customers, residential. And then from the estimates you seen last time, when they removed the interstate board and the lift station that was going to serve the proposed JF Island, that's why that cost decreased on that. And a total project cost of $4,830,000. That goes from basically the Farm Bureau all the way out to the county line. That's the area that I'm serving. Looking at the proposed funding summary, the USDA loan and grant, a grant of $980,000, a loan of $2,600,000, a grant from the infrastructure of $790,000, and a loan from the infrastructure for $1 million. Get a total project of $4,830,000. Yesterday, this information was provided to the Public Service Commission, Mr. Accord. He did receive it, and I called, spoke with him today. And toward the bottom of Page Two, you'll see the proposed debt, debt service on the line for both USDA and infrastructure. Third page, see existing owning expenses based on their annual report, and the additional operational maintenance costs for the sewage system extension. And we're only talking sewer. Below that, existing tension rates, they pay a flat per thousand, $10.29, or minimum $20.58. Now, if they're on the list, there are 3,400 gallon bills, $34,000. For that proposed funding scenario, you're right, it would cause an increase of 25% to the existing rates, subject to the approval of the Public Service Commission. The district is, falls under the rules of the PSC, and they can't have split rates. They all have to pay the same thing. This proposal doesn't include any annexation, there wouldn't be a surcharge to any of the businesses, they would all pay the same price. Looking at 25% increase, large plan sheets on the table up there shows the north, it's called Route 33 North Sewer Extension. And the other one, I looked at just the south. That would be extending from the Hampton Inn, heading west, all the way to JF Island and Central Supply, that's all around. That construction is $2.1 million. Total project cost is $2,770,000. That proposed funding would be RUS loan grant, RUS loan, 1.5 million, RUS grant, $500,000, with a USEDA grant, that's economic development administration grant, which totals proposed around $2.77 million. Looking at the usages, we've got the usages from Hodgsville to the businesses they supply now, which is JF Island, Central Supply, Frontier Communications. And looking at the proposed JF Island developments on the small drawing up here, what's, that's just proposed, I had to use that to get some ideas of waters to be used to get a revenue projection on the sewer. With all that being said, that project should be done within the existing rates of Tenerton PSD. And just... There's just no 25% increase, but the project is... Just, just the north would be approximately a 25% increase. Looking at just the south, it would be no increase. But if you combine them, of course, you're probably going to have something less than your 25%. I just wanted to look at it like that, to get an idea of what's, what impact it would have, looking at this two separate projects. Neither of these estimates include any cost to upgrade anything within the city's system. I heard there's a lift station there at the Hampton Inn, that, that, of course, would need upgrading, this part of the south project. Those companies to be serving on the south would be JF Island, Solzrum, Central Supply, Solzrum, Clay Holmes, Frontier Communications, Weir, SPM, Oil Gas, and the proposed building there just across the Farm Bureau.
I'd like to add, too, that I have the current utility cost rates for, off the PSC website, and Tenerton PSD, based on 3,400 gallons right now, is only 123 of the 320 custom PSD sewers in West Virginia. Where, our rates, we call, we're 123, so our rates is on the low side right now, 20% doing a, a devastating... Katie, you have a question?
I have a, just to mention, 25% for everybody that they send, just the people that are being served.
Everybody, sort of existing customers, new customers. You're not allowed to have split rates with that PSD. If it's deemed that we see that it's not feasible to serve the residential customers in that area, we'll be cut that out of the project, but I was, I was under the impression we have to look at the entire area, both north and south.
Also, I wanted to point out that the north scenario also includes going up into the valleys, the rural areas. And those areas could be cut out if the need did not exist there, that could be cut out, which would reduce that total project cost down some. And if you go buy someone's house with a sewer line that they're required to tie in if you're within 300 feet, if you're outside of 300, you don't, you don't have to. But if we're going to go up here, and you're only going to pick up, say, in a mile, three or four customers, we would probably hack that out of the job. But at least the design is set up that it would be conducive for those extensions in the future someday, and you have more people.
Am I correct in understanding that yours is much, your north side proposal is much more comprehensive in terms of coverage and folks that would sign on than, I think, what was previously communicated?
I don't have any maps to see exactly where the city's going, but then with their estimate... We use, we use the same first area that you used in the estimate. I thought it would be overstop in that quarter, right?
For Phase One. For Phase One, for the... As the interest comes out in Red Rock, Bridgerton, and the Lawrence area, as that interest increases, that's when we would look at entering into those areas, because right now, the numbers don't reflect that.
Okay, so Jay, your Phase Three, which is a residential, is part of what Dave addressed in their proposal?
We were, we were taxed last meeting to come back with an overall cost for the project, that we could compare apples to apples, and that's what was done. That's why we didn't duplicate maps, because it essentially would have been the images that you have in front of us.
Yes, Greg. Ours.
And may I ask a question? I know the last meeting that we had, it was discussed at the end if Tenerton was granted to be able to lay the sewer lines. I think, Jay, you spoke that the city would possibly be willing to do the water, if, was that, am I being correct?
I mean, that's always been our plan, because that's, you know, in our area, you know, on the south side.
Right.
You know, but that just hasn't come as quickly to the table as this recent sewer expansion project.
To be quite honest, Jay, the whole county's in your area. 20 miles from Buchanan is the whole county.
You're serving four elements.
Let me say that we're not looking to take anybody's territory away from them. We're not looking to take Tenerton's territory away from them. We're just wanting to add more options to the residents that live in the area, so they have more choices. Today, we can't, we can't grant Tenerton the authority to lay that line. All we can do is give them the authority to offer it to the customers if they want it, and, and apply for the grants. But they need our, they, they need us to give them the extension and their territory to do that. We just want, you know, I don't think it's right not to give the county residents every possible option we can. So with that being said, I'd like to make the same motion I made before. I made a motion that we extend, or start the procedure to extend Tenerton's PSD District Western Buchanan to the county line.
Paul, would you like to be able to speak again toward that motion, what would happen moving forward? I guess, Jay, I mean... I guess, Jay, I mean, if you're on the spot, I was just wondering if Tenerton was granted that, and I know it's your plan, and I, I know everybody wants to service that area, we're all here for the same reason. I would like that, to think that we would make that same was and, and would get easy for them, would that?
Yeah, that has to be decided by the water board, you know, and I, I don't know why we wouldn't do it, but I mean, we've got to work out the monetary logistics, you know, but the water line has been designed, it's been designed, I plan for some worst-case scenarios, because some unknowns on the developmental side for the two or three properties on the south. So, just took the, the, the worst-case scenario, based upon the information that I have, and that's where I've come up with this cost in alignment, you know, making sure that there is fire flow at the location, but that's, that's where I am. But again, as far as when we, the water department would commit to starting, that is not my call. But it wouldn't be, I mean, we're not going to.
One other, the P.S.D. has no intention of serving the water only on the south side of Thirty-three, up through the J.F. Allen development there. It, it makes all sense for Buchanan to serve that, because they have the required big diameter line sizes that Jay was talking about for sprinkler systems and that stuff. And ours, our water in that area on that side comes from Sol's Run back down, we have a smaller diameter line, so we, we're not arguing about that. They should be the ones to serve all the way through the J.F. Allen area.
If they will serve, if not, we can extend the eight-inch down, but if the city, you know, we're not going to stand, they need to service over there. Hotchel P.S.D. isn't going to stand in way of progress if the city can put a line in it, but if there's not a line there, and they don't want to put it in, we have an eight-inch rig at the telephone company there, but we're not pushing for the water. Or, yeah, we're just looking at, making sure they are served. Tom needs water down there, J.F. Allen needs it, so, yeah, that's like Randy said, we're not shoving for water.
Does, how does the water district have the capacity to serve those commercials, the dental commercial interests?
We're not sure, that's one of the questions. It may require, if we're going to have a sprinkler system, well, let Randy answer that.
What's your capacity, you mean, for, to give them the water?
Yeah, to meet the fire needs and all of that, if the property's fully developed.
We would have to get either an extension of our line from Sol's Run down, or we would have to come under the Thirty-three to get to them with a bigger diameter line. And my gut feeling is the answer's no. I, I think it would be better served from Buchanan right there.
Does the Buchanan have the capacity?
I have the capacity without anything adding, anything other than the new line, five hundred gallons a minute, and I can go up to twelve, but it would require an upgrade of twenty-two hundred feet, but as it sits right now, and based upon the schematics that you have provided us, using the worst-case scenario of those two schematics, planning on it, I can give you five hundred gallons a minute without doing any upgrades to ours.
And could that service extend beyond that?
That goes all the way to Tom's property.
Okay.
You asked me about the process and the procedure and what it would take to extend the boundaries. Remember, I mentioned both last time and at the beginning of this meeting today, that the, the county commission can approve the expansion of the boundaries, and that does not obligate anybody to provide service, but it does enable the Tenerton P.S.D. to provide some service in the event they put together a project, apply for funding, so and so forth. Likewise, the city can do the same thing, at the same time, realistically, the, whoever's going to do it has to get the funding, and the funding will be through either the method that the city proposed, or through the Infrastructure Council that Tenerton P.S.D. has contemplated. They have, at the, at the I.D.E.C., the Infrastructure Jobs Development Council, they have the three committees. One is the Technical Review Committee, and another is the Financial Committee, and the third is the Consolidation Committee. And when you have two competing utilities able to provide service in the same area, they will try to sort that out, to make sure that one, only one is going to get the money, that's just for sure. So, if that should take place, the only way it's going to take place is if the P.S.D. boundaries are expanded. The process is that there will be, you'll have to have an introduction of, and approval of a motion on the county commission's own motion to expand the boundaries, and then twenty to forty days after that has been passed by the, by the county commission, there'll be a hearing and a final order is issued after that. And so, the entire process takes from the time of the introduction of the, of the proposed action, forty years.
Who would be involved in the hearing?
Anybody who's interested. They can come in and express their approval or disapproval, and then the county commission takes final action on that. It then has to submit a copy of the order to, if it approves the action that's been proposed. They submit that to the Public Service Commission, and the Public Service Commission can hold its own hearing in the area, or they can just approve it without any kind of error, because they've already had it. And if the P.S.D. elects to do that, they typically do it on a fairly expedited basis, probably within ninety days. For the P.S.D., that's an expedited basis.
And that gives us, or is the chance to weigh in on?
Again, see, they're going to, they're going to have the opportunity at, at the need of the county commission, to be sure.
In that twenty to thirty days, that, that year?
Right.
And then again, a second motion, or, or a motion at that time would also need to be made to move forward.
So essentially, Jerry's motion today, the second would push, push us out another twenty to thirty days to allow folks to come in?
Well, if, if the motion is granted today to extend the boundaries, you'll need to draft the proposed boundary designation, and that's through a means and bounds definition. So you'll have to have an engineer or somebody within the county that has the technical ability to establish where it is that you want the Tenerton P.S.D. boundaries to be, and then that will be included within the proposals. And, and then, if you adopt that proposal, then you go twenty to forty days later and have the hearing and final approval.
Yeah, we can hear from customers and see if they're comfortable. Mr. Skinner, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you feel, and I know, I'm thinking on the spot, but that the water board would be interested, or would entertain the idea, or move forward? I know I asked Jay this question, but if Tenerton was granted to be able to put sewage, would the water board make it a smooth transition, you think, on the city's side, to be able to provide them with water in a timely manner as well?
Well, considering that water and sewage are currently separate entities with the city, I mean, they're, they're on separate boards, so one is not required without the other. I mean, there's water, there's areas where there's water right now, where there is no sewage. So, I mean, I am one person, I am one vote, but I, I mean, if we're able to serve that area and provide the service to the customer base, which we currently, I mean, we would have the right to do so, yes, I believe that we would move forward in that regard, because we're the ones with, with the capability to most adequately serve that area.
And this? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Katie?
Yeah, I got a couple. Whenever Greg was talking about the, the annex, not to bring it up, but just do it and get past it, let's see, where was I going with that? The, we're saying we're not annexing, but is it possible if there's ten people on the north side? And six of them say they want annexed, does that bring the other four into play? How does that work?
We cannot spot annex, but...
Well, I'm not really prepared to kind of give a, this course on annexation, but there are three methods. The one that you're talking about is the petition method, which if a certain percentage, the percentage is getting in right now, but a certain percentage of lot owners, parcel owners petition the city to be annexed, then they can be annexed. And I don't know what that threshold is off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to throw that in with that.
There are a lot, I mean, that's, there are a lot of things that have to go into that. This really provides the meaning to have that discussion, but, I mean, you have to talk about petition and contents of the petition, how the property is described in the area that we're talking about, and then meeting that threshold, and, you know, and then what estate owners are entitled to have a say in it. I mean, it is a very cloudy situation, we're not even discussing, but, you know, but bear in mind that the city limits include the highway itself out to...
The bridge.
Out to the bridge.
Great problem.
Yep. So, if anybody is adjacent to that property, they're already adjacent to, to the city itself right now. Of course, that doesn't carry, that doesn't take your, that doesn't go out to your property, but...
Which bridge crossing?
The one that runs straight up out, it's property, across from the Farm Bureau, the one that goes on the his side.
The Red Rock or?
So, so, play that out, by implication, you're saying that annexation is what? For the adjacent properties too, since you've, you've kind of taken the highway up that corridor.
That gave a little...
Okay, but...
I don't, I guess I'm not, I guess I'm a mischievous.
Well, maybe be clearer if you could give us an opinion, back to my original question, if we're now mandated to sign up for the sewer, because you're going to put that line out there, you've kind of indicated you're doing that, then, you know, you said that we're not talking about annexation, well, that's today, what about tomorrow?
Well, I mean, anybody can petition for annexation anytime they want to, but the question of having this line run through in any phase of project, one, two, or three, has no connection to the question of annexation, except, I mean, it just bears with you said, if benefiting property owners want the city, meaning the city council, not the sanitary board, but the chairman of the city, to pay a hundred percent of the cost of that line extension, that's the option to do that. But that is a, I guess, annexation is voluntary, I mean, that's ultimately what we're talking about here, and if the property owners and the city, and the county commission both against it, then the petition method, again, the petition method is a voluntary method.
Okay, so, if I understood your proposal, we, as members of that, will be paying two-thirds of it financed over time. The details to further people that join, then that surcharge gets adjusted?
The surcharge, no, the timeframe, the repayment term, short.
Okay, short, all right.
That surcharge would cover the two hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, we're talking about phase one, yes.
Yeah, okay, and that would be divided among the number of people that actually sign up for it?
Well, the number of people that actually come online.
Yeah, so if just seven come online, then...
There aren't going to be seven that come online, I mean, there's a defined, phase one is a defined property, I think it's nine?
Nine.
Nine. The median, the median number that was back, that was done on the back of the envelope computation, and again, this isn't final, because it's subject to, it's subject to further refinement, but the median, I don't have that piece of paper, I saw somebody...
Hundred and twelve dollars.
Hundred and twelve dollars. That's the, that would be the median, and that's going to be based upon either linear feed or over twenty years. It's either going to be based on linear feed, or it's going to be based upon a lot size. And so that number will be adjusted on a customer-by-customer basis, unlikely, but again, that's subject to final approval. So, that's the back of the envelope.
I've got a little question, who's? Nate with Thrasher? If you're on the north side, and you're coming out past me, actually, my lot there, there's two different pieces of property. It's flat, but there's two pieces there. Now, if I want two hookups, that's not a problem, right?
Right.
And I know, for Mark and Buck, I know Sam's not here, so, and that's what I'd really like to add to answer, but they've worked this around a little bit to, to try to be beneficial, to keep the cost down, but at the same token, I'm at the tail end, so I'm not getting what the rest are getting if we do it through the city. You know, there's going to be a pump station, or something I'll take, maintain, or...
That three hundred thousand includes your costs.
Yeah, but now, does that also give me the option where it comes to the end of my property, where I have to?
When you grab it into either the wet well or the gravity sewer line, your additional property can be collected.
Is that right, Buck?
Sam and I talked about that, too.
Okay, because I know he looked...
Yeah, but you've got, you've got to break it down into two part problems.
Yes.
So, yeah, who's responsible?
So he could go to the tail end of my property and...
Go to something... It's the beginning of your second problem.
Beginning of your second property.
Yeah. We talked, so Sam and I talked about that with your...
It doesn't go to the back. You would be responsible for, you know, the extreme, you know, we would come to your next property in line, we would come to that property line.
You're required to...
And then you got to come...
Lateral.
And then you got to come to us, but we could, we would be on to your property three to five feet, and then you would be responsible for coming to that point.
Yeah, but now, is that for the first hookup, or the second?
Second.
The second hookup.
The second problem.
Okay, so, the first property I got, it actually's got the building set in on it. That would be a one tap, right? And then it would go, I don't know whether you do a road board, or whatever you do there, and takes it to the end of my...
Where's your, what you had?
I just don't want to get in the favor of not getting...
One road board, one road board, and we split service there.
Okay, that was my question.
All right, so last question on that north side, if I understood, the phase three, which is a residential, which is potentially down the road, it comes off what you're proposing as phase one?
Yes.
So you're using phase one line in order to then branch out? When that goes through, the funding of that, does that affect the rate that the original nine are paying?
You have to put additional costs, which that surcharge would pass along to those customers, you will bear that cost, the, the line was paid for. Second question you're asking.
Yeah, I mean, am I then now part of this broader line, that I'm paying additional money that will continue out?
Your original will be towards that two hundred thousand dollars.
And that's it?
Yes. Don't pay the, the surcharge.
Don't pay the surcharge beyond that.
Yeah, and again, you're, you're adding costs, you know, property costs at that point, that they have to repeat as well. And again, there'll be a contribution from the sewer department, and that two-thirds model will apply again, and, yeah. The more people, just like was said, the more people that tap on it, not dilute the surcharge, but shorten the term. And, and that, you know, that, that funding mechanism Tom threw out there is just what we, we had on the back of the paper, that is not anywhere near a finalized. Yeah, because I, yeah, you said the rate wasn't changed, so... There, there could be, it could be a long-term payback.
Jerry, the surcharge is just for the north side, correct?
Right, that's the proposed one. The projects that we have, or the sanitary board as a group, was, was with a surcharge model to lay that line and get it out there next year.
And then on the south side, the five point two, maybe, or...
Well, five point two is a residential.
And we don't know what that surcharge would be, because it would depend on...
That's right.
That would depend.
And that's going to, and that one is, in likely, going to be a consumption-based model.
Right, so the example of that hundred, I know we're playing the number to a hundred and twelve dollars, is really just for that north side, I do?
And that's a median number?
I understand, I understand. Well, I'd like to second the motion, so we could move forward.
Well, I'd like to second the motion, so we can move forward with the hearing.
Okay.
My secretary.
You have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.